On the southern portion and then to reduce that width as well. There's a significant pathway there with some, already something included landscape buffer, as you can see there. So, just thought I'd bring that up.
We'll just ask you to close with any comment on that. Just in case there is anyone who would like to provide public testimony.
Okay, thank you. On the...
Joanne.
I'm sorry. Oh, were you talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me find out first if there's anyone who would like to provide testimony. So, is there any, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay. Final remarks.
Joanne Butler again. If you wanted a statement on that southern boundary area, at least, and I'm sorry, I wasn't at the hearing, but did review the minutes. The discussion at your last hearing was that, given the width of the irrigation easement even further south in the property, the landscape buffer was contemplated to be five feet. But there was a lot of discussion that we didn't know, or the council didn't know, or the staff didn't know exactly how wide that irrigation easement was. And so, that was why it was left. Let's not even deal with how wide it should be. Let's wait till the developer of that southern portion of the property comes and we'll deal with that person. So, we actually won't, as Mavric, won't even deal with that southern boundary. You'll deal with it with the next developer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Butler. Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Just a quick question. Is July 2nd sufficient?
Oh, you know, we're ready to sign as soon as it's ready from the legal...
Or June 2nd.
June 2nd. As soon as it's ready from the legal department, we're ready to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council...
Mr. Neri.
To answer Councilwoman Palmer's question, what we plan, we have to have new findings. So, what we're going to do is put them together. You know, sometimes we do findings and then we bring the development agreement back after that. Since we really have all of this completed, except for these couple provisions that we've already worked out, we thought we could get that all done at the same time. So, we should have it back to them within a week.
Very good. Any further questions, Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor. Bill is the intent and the language going to be set on the landscaping, within the development agreement, that the landscaping on the south boundary would be done in the first phase, unless the city receives the short plat application on or before X date. So, if the split doesn't, isn't applied for, that the developer would be required still then to landscape in accordance with our code?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman Borton, that's what I would anticipate, is that really the incentive is on them to split the parcel off and then they don't have to deal with this question at all, and they could still be consistent with our code. So, I hadn't had a chance to discuss it with Ms. Butler, but I think that's probably the way we would do it, because then, again, it's all in their ballpark to get it done.
Madam Mayor, that would all be in the DA, though, right?
Yes.
And I would imagine that would have to be applied for before building permits, so you knew setbacks and those kind of details.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Two other quick questions. Is the scope of what landscape is or isn't required on that southern portion addressed at the time of that future split? We need to decide today as part of that what the scope of it would be at that future date, or do we decide that later?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I would think you would decide it later, because you don't have any active project or application on that parcel. Once it's split off, it's just going to be a vacant piece of ground.
Madam Mayor, last question. There's reference in the staff report about a new part of the solution with a license being provided to the city to enter on the property. I didn't see that in the language that's proposed. The additional right of the city having a license, landowner doesn't do it, that we can do it, utilize the surety proceeds to get it completed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, so subsequent to the application, Ms. Butler and I had that conversation. She did provide us additional language that we will then put into the development agreement that gives that specific license, because that was the, that was really the rub, is the financial ability is one thing, but the legal ability to remove them is really what we need in conjunction with that. So, we have worked out language that we will include in the development agreement if that's the direction of the council.
Okay. Madam Mayor, that's something other than what's in 5.2?
It's new additional language. Yes, sir.
Great to clarify. Any further questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question again for either of you.
Sorry, Dean. Question likely for Mr. Neri. I agree that the signage is valuable. Billboards located in the heart of Meridian are equally valuable if we and if the applicant forgets to remove them. Is there, has there been any conflict, any type of penalty if the landowner doesn't remove them and the city has to then use city resources and time to get these apparatuses removed?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, well, part of that's what the bond is for, right? It's the financial ability to do that. Enforcement is always on the city for enforcing any provisions of a development agreement. Attorney's fees and costs and things are always going to be determined by court in those regards. You also have the ability in this and all development agreements to de-annex the property as well in the future if you want to. But there isn't any, none of our development agreements have financial penalties built into the requirements.
Mr. Neri, just clarification. Is there anything that prohibits us from attaching a financial penalty?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, it's, Councilman Cavanagh, it's a contract between the city and the property owner, and certainly if that's something else that the council wants and the developer's willing to agree to that, that's certainly within your ability to require that.
Great.
Any further questions or discussion from council? Well, if there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move to close the public hearing on item 10A, H. 2017-0042.
Second.
A motion is second to close the public hearing on item 10A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item 10A, H. 2017-0042, to allow for the modification of the development agreement and time extension. Request is for three months, so the motion would be to grant that three-month extension to obtain the necessary signatures, and that the modified development agreement incorporates the reference to signage, the billboard signage as its application towards the city's requirement, as well as the requirements referenced for the landscape on the southern portion that's been represented by both the applicant and staff. And that the additional provision granting the city a license to accomplish their removal, utilizing the surety that's provided to do so, ensuring that it's of sufficient amount, did that also be included in the development agreement?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Discussion.
Madam Mayor, I guess just to clarify, you mentioned the signage, this footage. Are you saying that it does not hinder their regular signage, correct?
Madam Mayor, correct. Really to the intent to memorialize here what we discussed and agreed on before. Same concept, yep.
Anything further from council? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item 10B is a public hearing for H. 2017-0019. I will open the public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the council. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning. This site consists of 14.6 acres of land. It's zoned RUT in Ada County and located at the southeast corner of East Chindon Boulevard and North Meridian Road. The comprehensive planned future land use map designation is mixed-use community. The applicant requests annexation and zoning of 16.32 acres of land with a C zoning district consistent with the MUC future land use map designation. The site plan was submitted that depicts how the site is proposed to develop, as shown, actually not proposed, excuse me, is developed with a 52,000...
Sonia, we can just see our last application.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, council.
I kept thinking, maybe...
Same property.
They look just the same.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. So, the site plan shows, shown on the screen, shows how the site is developed with a 52,220 square foot church and accessory structures, a single-family residential home and a food pantry. Parking and access, all of the existing structures are proposed to remain. One full access exists via Meridian Road and another full access exists via Chindon Boulevard, which is shared with the Zamsaus property to the east. No new accesses are proposed. Parking exists on the site that exceeds UDC standards. A 35-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along North Meridian Road and East Chindon Boulevard, both entryway corridors. And a 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway is required within the buffer along Chindon, within a public pedestrian easement. The applicant should reserve all necessary right-of-way as required by the Idaho Transportation Department for the future widening of Chindon Boulevard outside of the required street buffer. Connection to the city sewer system is required within 60 days of annexation into the city. Connection to city water is not required due to the terms of the 2007 agreement between the city and United Water. To ensure compliance with UDC standards for site improvements, a certificate of zoning compliance is required to be submitted within 60 days of annexation. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the subject annexation and zoning request with the development agreement per the staff report. Tamara Thompson from the Land Group, the applicant, testified in favor of the application. No one else testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was again received from Tamara Thompson. The Land Group in agreement with the staff report. There were no issues of discussion by the commission or changes to the staff recommendation. And no written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Is the applicant here this evening? You don't look like Tamara.
No, Madam Mayor, Members of the council. Michael Thomas, I've worked for the Land Group. I'm here in place with Tamara tonight. And as mentioned, we do not have any objections with the staff report. We're in complete agreement, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for joining us. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, seen none. Counsel, any further information needed from staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
See, and then I move that we close the public hearing on H. 2017-0019.
Second.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing on item 10B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve H. 2017-0019. The request annexation and zoning of 16.32 acres of land with a C zoning district and to include all staff and applicant comment.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item 10B. As stated, any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item 10C is public hearing, H. 2017-0010. Open the staff, or public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. The next application before you is a request for rezone. The rezone area consists of a total of .84 of an acre of land, zoned LO, R15, and R8, located at the southeast corner of West McMillan Road and North McDermott Road. This property was annexed in 2013 and included in the preliminary plat for the Oaks South development. At the request of staff, the applicant submitted the subject rezone application to clean up the existing zoning in the development so that the zoning coincides with the lot configurations shown on the approved and future final plats. This will eliminate lots having dual zoning. The commission recommended approval of the subject application. Travis Jeffers, JUB Engineers, testified in favor for the applicant, and no one else testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from Kristy Watkins, JUB Engineers, the applicant, in agreement with the staff report. There were no outstanding issues for the council or any discussion by the commission, and no written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions. And this is a, excuse me, this is an exhibit showing the actual areas proposed for the rezone.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions at this time? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and council. For the record, Travis Jeffers, JUB Engineers, 250 South Beechwood Avenue in Boise. I'm here if you have any additional questions. Staff's pretty much summed up the reason we're here to clean it up and make sure when there's no dual zoning going on. So, that's really, that's straightforward, so if you have any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I have none, ma'am.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, seen none, council.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we close the public hearing on H. 2017-0010.
Second.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing on item 10C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve H. 2017-0010.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item 10C. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item 10D is a public hearing regarding water meter and water system repair fee schedule. I'll turn this over to Dave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of council. If you recall, we were here in mid-March to discuss what we call the water meter and water system repair fees, and we're here tonight seeking adoption of the updated fee schedule. What you should have in front of you is a copy of the public notice that went out and was posted per our requirements, as well as a copy of the resolution. Again, under Meridian City Code, Section 9112, the Public Works Department is authorized to charge fees for our water meters and water meter pertinences and repairs to the water system. These fees were originally, or excuse me, last updated in 2006, so we're here tonight to update those fees primarily due to the fact that we're looking for cost recovery from our suppliers for what we're charged. So, we'd be happy to stand for any questions on that.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Why has it been since 2006, since we've had any revisions, if we've been overspending?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, that's a good question. I think there's probably a combination of reasons, primarily time to get to this. Last time I was here, we did commit to coming back on an annual basis for these fees to update them. I know there's discussions throughout the departments to do that on a citywide level, and that's our commitment to you moving forward for these fees is to do just that.
Answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? If there's no further questions or comments, counsel, I would entertain closing this public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearing on the adopting updates to the water meter and water system repair fee schedule.
Second.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing on item 10D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item 10D-1 is Resolution 17-2011.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve Resolution Number 17-2011.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item 10D-1. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item 11A is under Department reports. We have a report from our purchasing department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. If you'll recall, last time I was here, I had an out-of-the-ordinary bid award and asked if you'd like me to continue to come up there, and you made a comment that you didn't see me enough, and you wanted me to keep bringing those. And I'm afraid with the construction environment, the way it is, you're going to see me quite a bit, I think, in the next few months. I have three contracts that I have before you for award today, but I wanted to talk a little bit about how our bids have been coming in. The three that I have before you, two of them have only one bid. One of them had no bids, and we went out and rebid it, and we got two when we went out the second time. All three of these have came in over the engineer's estimate. They're not over the budget, but they're over the engineer's estimate, and they range from 5% over to almost 70% over the engineer's estimate. So, when the bids come in, like this, the process that I do is I go meet with Public Works and I sit down with the city engineer or the assistant city engineers to determine the urgency of the project and discuss whether or not we think it might be better to put it off to a later date and maybe bid in the fall and hope for a better construction environment. I will continue to do that with the three projects that I have before you. They are crucial to larger projects. One of them's very crucial to a larger project that we need to get moving forward, so it can't be put off. And then, I also have another project that will be bidding next week, where we had a pre-bid last week and no one showed up to the pre-bid, and it is very crucial to a larger project. So, we've spent this, a couple days this week contacting contractors to see if we could drum up some interest in it, and we do have at least one contractor who said they are interested in bidding and possibly a second. That's the process that we will continue to go through. With construction booming as it is, the contractors are busy, and they get to pick and choose what they bid on, so...
Keith, I know that I've talked to Public Works about this, but I think it's going to be incumbent on us to look at how we can bundle some of these projects, so you can make it of greater interest perhaps to take a look at that. And so, if you can kind of sit down and look at what we do have coming up and see if there is a way to start better packaging these, so they don't go out in the smaller items, we can give them something a little bit larger and meatier to chew on.
Sure, and we've had that discussion on the one that I just was discussing with you, the latest one. That is a possibility with that one. The only problem that Public Works will have is it's going to really put a crimp in the timeline. It's going to put us behind schedule if that is in fact what we end up having to do with the bid for next week. But we'll come, bring that to you when that occurs, and we'll discuss it at that time. With that, I do have three bids before you.
Mr. Byrd has a question.
Keith, I know that construction is very busy now. Is the private sector having problems getting bids too?
From what I understand, the few people that I've talked to, they have. They, they're in the same boat. People are picking and choosing what they're going to do, and they're really going to work for their favorite contractors right now.
They're going to work for where they don't have to do the paperwork and stuff that we require, which I don't, I think's great, to be truthful, but...
I spoke to you...
It's sad that, you know, you're going over the estimates that high, but there's nothing we can do about it if we can't find the people, other than just get out and talk to some of the contractors and say, hey, is there anything we can do to help?
That's what we've been trying to do, and I think that's what we'll continue to do in this environment. I did speak to one of our consultants last week. It wasn't one of our projects, but I was discussing this with one of our design consultants, and they have an $8.2 million bid, or project out. They did a pre-qualification, and they had one person interested, and they had to beat the street, and they were only able to drum up three contractors who were even interested in pre-qualifying for that size of a project.
That's sad.
So, that's tough.
That is sad.
So, we will do our best to entice them to come to Meridian and do work for us, and we will work with Public Works in combining projects if need be to make it desirable. If no other questions, we can talk about the three contracts I do have before you. I guess I would also like to, we always send these, when we go out for bid, we put it on our website, we put it on an FTP site, we send it down to the AGC, and when they're a formal bid, we send them to the newspaper as well. So, there's not a whole lot more that we can do to, other than calling contractors independently and trying to see if they're interested. With that, I have three contractors, or contracts before you. There is the East Williams Street Sewer Line Replacement with L2 excavation for $85,712.90. I have the Amity Water Line Extension at Lucas Grove, which is $81,679. That is also with L2 construction. That is one of the contractors that I've been able to talk to and entice them into bidding our projects. And our third one is the water main replacement at South Heidi Place in West Kimbrough Street, and that's with star construction for $138,926.
Madam Mayor, with the permission of the other council, I will make all three of these in one motion. I move we approve the contract with L2 excavation not to exceed $85,712.90 for the East Williams Street Sewer Line Replacement. Number two is contract with L2 excavation for a not-to-exceed amount of $81,629. That's for the Amity Water Line Extension, Lucas Grove East. And number three with star construction for not-to-exceed amount of $138,926 for water main replacement at South Heidi Place with Kimbrough, uh, West Kimbrough Street, and for the mayor to sign the contracts and the clerk to attest.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11A, 1, 2, and 3. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
11B is also under Public Works. Laurel, I... Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your time. We have a PowerPoint presentation, no surprise. So, Madam Mayor, Members of the council, thank you for your time this evening. The Public Works Department is bringing forward a budget amendment to address... The Public Works Department is bringing forward a budget amendment to address the issues surrounding the primary power lines at the treatment facility. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with background information, details surrounding, and details surrounding the viable options and alternatives.
Close the arrows on the keyboard.
Oh, okay. Perfect. So I'd like to briefly cover the agenda. We'll talk a little bit about the background of the current power distribution system, discuss a little bit how our current expansion projects are impacting the power system at the facility, talk about the options that we have relating to the primary power system and the backup generators, and then provide you with our recommendation for the best option moving forward for the city. So as you know, power is absolutely critical at the treatment facility, and having backup power is not only essential to allow us to keep flow moving through the facility if we have a power outage, but it's also a requirement of the Department of Environmental Quality. So I'll provide you with a brief overview of our current system. This is a photo representation. So under the current system at the treatment facility, Idaho Power owns the primary power lines in the plant. Those are the yellow and red lines you see in the photo. The city pays a monthly facility fee of approximately $6,500 a month, which covers the installation and maintenance cost on the lines. Idaho Power determines that fee by amortizing the install value over 31 years. However, at the end of those 31 years, the city still doesn't own the power lines. Idaho Power still owns the system. So the city also pays for the electricity that's used on top of that facility fee. And with the current plant expansion, the facility's fee was expected to increase to approximately $13,000 a month. So the city also owns, or owns, the centralized generation center, which is shown on that box in the orange towards the bottom of the photo there. However, what makes our system unique is that when we lose mainline power, we use our backup generators to transmit power on Idaho Power's lines around our facility. This isn't a standard setup. Normally, Idaho Power does not allow other people's power onto their power lines. However, in 2005, this was an agreement that Idaho Power entered into with the city, and it still stands to this day. So where did things change? In 2015, we began working with Idaho Power on system upgrades that would serve the capacity expansion and the headworks project. At that time, we were planning to have Idaho Power design, construct, and own the power system for the expansion. However, in mid-2016, Idaho Power came to us and said that the MOU would be voided with the expansion and that they were no longer interested in serving a non-standard system and gave the city two options. We could either move our backup generators off of their lines, or we could buy out the lines at the treatment plant. So we, the design and construction of the electrical systems for those two big projects was put on hold until we could come to a decision. And so Public Works took a step back and thoroughly evaluated both options for numerous factors, including cost, reliability, and operability. So as we mentioned, we evaluated both options, and we vetted the financial piece of the options through the city's finance department. So I'd like to review kind of both of those options and what they mean. Option number one, moving our backup generators. So with this option, we would have to purchase new backup generators, move them at strategic locations around the facility, and install secondary transmission lines for those backup generators. We'd also have to install fuel lines to service those generators. And in addition, we would still be paying that $13,000 a month fee to Idaho Power to basically lease the primary power lines. So option number two is buying out the system. With that option, we keep our centralized generation facility, and we pay Idaho Power for the cost of the install of the current power lines at the facility, and we get rid of that $13,000 a month facility charge. So in the long run, option number two financially makes the best sense for the city. It actually saves us close to $1.5 million over that 31-year amortization period. So we're recommending with proceeding with option number two, the system buyout for several reasons. Financially, it makes sense. Owning the city, or owning the lines, as I said, saves the city a considerable amount of money over the long run. Owning the system also provides us additional reliability because the city can proactively maintain and service those power lines. And then owning the system also provides us with future control and flexibility. So any future expansions at the treatment plant, we're in control of the expansion and the location of those power lines. However, since owning and maintaining high-voltage systems would be a new thing for our department, we wanted to vet a couple of things, one of those being high-voltage contractors who could help us maintain the lines and also respond in an emergency. You may recognize some of these names. This is not an all-inclusive list, but Track Utilities and Anderson Wood, who have extensive experience servicing high-voltage customers and providing emergency response. We also had a third-party engineer inspect and evaluate our system to ensure that we had accurate values and conditions for the equipment we were buying. And the good news is, is that our system, our current system, is in good shape, and should, with the added lines for the capacity expansion and headworks, will serve the facility up to 15 MGD. So that's a little ways into the future. So the timing of this budget amendment is really important, which is why I'm coming here today rather than waiting for the normal budget cycle. The capacity and headworks projects are currently under construction, and those projects are expected to need permanent power in mid-2018. So we need to move forward with a decision, preferably system buyout, as soon as possible so that we can work through the system buyout with Idaho Power and then also begin design and construction of the high-voltage system that will serve the back of the treatment plant. So delaying this could have significant impacts on the construction and startup of the new treatment facility. However, we also realize that this is not a small amount of money that we're coming forward and asking for, and this money was not planned or anticipated. So we took a really close look at our five-year CIP, and because of delays in the NPDS permit, we were able to delay and postpone several projects, and we are able to remain solvent over the five-year planning period with adding this project in. So the amendment that you have in front of you tonight includes several items, including the purchase of the primary overhead power lines, the expansion of the system for the capacity project and headworks, purchasing and upgrading critical power equipment to have on-site to help shorten future potential power outages. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
I have none.
So if there are no questions, counsel, there is a request for a budget amendment.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
We, I don't know how we got away without buying this right to the start, but because Idaho Power usually makes people that use our much power own their own lines. Anyway, I would move that we approve the budget amendment for the Idaho Power infrastructure buyout at the wastewater treatment plant not to exceed $2.5 million, and that also is to include improving a consultant agreement with Northwest Hydraulic Consultants Incorporated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11B. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Mylum.
I just want to make a comment. But probably not that relevant, but I'm just not thrilled with Idaho Power for making us pay an installation fee for existing... Just saying.
I don't think anyone's excited about this, but Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes motion carried. Item 11C, counsel in front of you, you have Resolution 17-2012, Appointing Jonathan Wardle to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. He is representing the building industry on this impact fee advisory committee because Brad, I can't remember Brad's last name, had to step off.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve Resolution Number 17-2012, appointing Jonathan Wardle to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11C. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes motion carried. Counsel in front of you, or the request under 11D is, I came to you about 18 months ago to discuss project manager for the Crisis Center project that would be moving forward after getting legislative appropriations for a project in Boise that we had anticipated would be in partnership with the Allenbaugh House. Ada County is no longer sponsoring the contract for the potential Crisis Center, and another bidder won that award. And so in front of you today is a request to redirect the $3,502.50 that we committed to this project to join others to fill a budget shortfall for fiscal year 2017. When the budget for 2017 was developed, it was anticipated that we would have $45,000 as we had had the previous two years from the Boise Open. They helped fill a gap that we lost some funding from the state on, and it was not available for this year. We were not one of those selected projects. So the monies that were committed to the project management also totaled around the $45,000 budget shortfall. The other partners are willing to commit what they had that aside. And so tonight, I'm asking if this council would be willing to dedicate that 35, a little bit more than $3,500 towards the Allenbaugh House budget shortfall for 2017. And I would stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
The budget shortfall, is it a shortfall from what the city allocated less than we were supposed to? Or is it the Allenbaugh House, their own internal budget fell short because revenues to them didn't come in?
The shortfall was because we did not get the anticipated $45,000 from the Boise Open. And so that had balanced the budget for that year. For the first time since we've been partners to Allenbaugh House, we'll be seeking an increase during this budget year where all the partners will step up and increase their dues. But this is to address this year's budget shortfall.
Madam Mayor, one final question. Did the contribution from Ada County change?
Not this year.
Okay.
And I don't know about moving forward.
Okay. Maybe something going on with the future year?
Yeah.
Okay.
We are exploring the other cities in Ada County, and I know that they, I'll be talking with mayors of Kuna and Starr, and Mayor Beeter will be approaching Eagle and Garden City to see if they will be participants in the Allenbaugh House as well for 2018. Any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Hearing nine, I would move that we approve the budget amendment for the Allenbaugh House not to exceed $3,503.
Second.
You gave me an additional 50 cents?
I didn't see the 50 cents. Robert didn't put that in. He didn't round it.
Oh, he rounded up. If there's no further questions or discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes most carried. From the consent agenda, we did move item S, Resolution 17-2009, regarding the strategic plan, and would open this for discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thank you. I had requested that we remove this item from the consent agenda just in light of, I think, our discussion on this issue over the past few weeks. I didn't feel comfortable having it on the consent agenda without us at least having any last-minute comments or discussions. And if I may, Madam Mayor, I'd like to speak to the strategic plan kind of as a whole as to where we've been over the past few weeks. And specifically, I'd like to talk to a couple of comments that were made last week by Councilman Palmer, Councilwoman Little Roberts, and Councilman Borton. I think Councilmember Palmer brought to me what I thought was a really good point, and that was that when I ran for city council, I ran on the platform of community involvement. And I think that the strategic plan speaks so much to community involvement at all levels. And I, I think, I, Madam Mayor and I met this morning, and we talked on a number of issues. And one of the comments that I raised, that I've said many times, is that if you ask all six of us a question, you're going to get seven different answers. And I recognize that dealing with a strategic plan that was audacious as the one that was initially presented to us brings with it its own quirks and pieces that we have to work through. The challenge for me is, you know, last week, I heard from lots of council members that talked about wanting to be involved. I didn't hear a lot of comments about any council member saying we wanted to be the boss. I think that this is a council that respects the line that the mayor is the CEO of the city, is in charge of personnel. But I do struggle with the executive branch dictating to the legislative branch or the city council what level involvement that we can have specifically in the strategic plan. And I felt that in light of last week's discussion, there was a little bit of that. And I think that I would encourage this council, especially the council members that run on a platform of being involved in our community, to stay involved in the strategic plan, which brings me to Councilmember Borton's point. And one of the reasons why I'm not supportive of adopting the strategic plan tonight is I think Councilmember Borton brought up a great idea in that this plan has changed a lot over the past few months, and documents that have been presented to us have changed and evolved. But Councilmember Borton brought up, you know, for a future plan to have the mayor come and present where we are. Again, today, I don't know if the city has progressed any further in the strategic plan than it was when it was first presented to us in January. And as you recall, in January, there wasn't a lot of success that had been achieved yet. I'd like to know where we are before I support adopting moving forward. And I think Councilmember Borton's proposal to have a presentation from the mayor on this before we adopt it would be ideal. Furthermore, as the newest document that's been presented to us, the one that we're asked to adopt this evening, Councilwoman Little Roberts brought up a workshop session specifically to talk about the goals and get a better update. And maybe that happens in line with the presentation that Councilmember Borton brought up. But all of those reasons combined is, it's just a struggle for me to be willing to adopt this plan as it is today. As I mentioned earlier, I think that we're a council that wants to be involved and wants the city to be successful and wants to see the strategic plan being successful. But without knowing where we have been, success, how we found success in the past 18 months, it's really challenging for me to know that we're going to be successful over the next 16 months. So I don't know if anyone else has any other comments, but I will not be voting to support the adoption of the strategic plan tonight for the reasons that I've outlined here. the adoption of the strategic plan tonight for the reasons that I've outlined here this evening.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I echo the comments of Councilman Cavanagh and would add, kind of reiterating a little bit of what I talked about the previous time that we discussed the strategic plan, in that the statements, some of them are too broad. When I, you know, would read one of them, I'd have to look back to the more in-depth version that we've had previously to understand what it is that this is even talking about, what the goal really is, what's planned to make that happen. And I feel like we're almost being left out of participating in making this happen. Again, and just, the one page looks like a mission statement that's a feel-good paper, not, what is to work to make, so we can figure out how to make it happen and provide the tools to the, to your branch and to the city staff to make these things happen. Just feel like, again, we're left out, sitting here saying, "Sounds good, let's do that, whatever that is." And so the document that's presented to us, again, I can't support that as well, and I would hope that we could go back to, if it takes all night in one meeting to go through line by line, a previous version as we had done, and have a discussion, then at some point get tired of a discussion on a point and vote on it real quick, move on to the next one. I think that would be a much more effective way of creating the plan as opposed to the broad one-page version.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, well, the way that I see this, it's not a change in the strategic plan, but what we're being asked to adopt is the focus areas and goals. And within that, there are objectives, and, you know, there are other things that are happening, I say as we speak, but probably not tonight. But I understand that the point of wanting to know more information and maybe, you know, how much time and energy and money is being spent on getting these done, but I also understand that this is just us saying yes. These are, we agree as a council, as a city, that we all are aligned with the focus areas and goals. That doesn't mean that we're out of the entire picture, it doesn't mean that the plan has changed, the plan is still there, we're just not digging into every single detail, and I don't know that we really need to. I'm happy to do it, but I just don't know that that's really our place. I think that we each have our departments and our liaisons, and when directors or departments need help, they certainly come to us and would let us know, we need your participation in this way. At least I would hope that that's going to happen. So I just don't know that reading it every day or whatever is going to make a difference in how much you're able to participate in the community or getting it done.
Counsel, I guess, just to reiterate the discussion we had last week in terms of how often you will hear this, building into the resolution was to get the semi-annual update in October and in March, and that we would, in each of the departments, annual strategic updates, which you get once each workshop, as it alternates between the different departments. They will also be updating you to the strategic plan and what those objectives that they are, that they have the lead in, where they're at with it, and as well as any challenges or potential obstacles and successes they will share at that time. Two weeks, we think, after this is adopted, we'll be able to deploy the tool that has been shared with you, and that will be available to dig into the objectives and see where the completion of or status of items completed to that objective will be. We're right now trying to give weight to the various tactics, so as a tactic is completed, it will show in work completed on that form, and then that tactic will roll up into the document that you view underneath the objective. So that, I know, was a question that was asked last week in terms of being able to utilize that tool, and we're just waiting for the nod to move forward on it. So I guess that was the update I said I would give you last week, and is there any additional questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I want to bring up a couple of questions for clarification. Are any of the tactics changing? What from the, I guess, the version that we saw in January that included the tactics? Has tactics changed?
You did not see, the tactics are tasks. Those are action items, and so they haven't been in this document.
I'm aware that in the current document, but I guess my question still stands. Have tactics changed from the last time that we talked about this in January?
I know that as each of the departments and leads are working on these objectives, yeah, they are working on their action plans. So as I stated in the tool itself, they're changing and trying to be able to show you the progress on completion, percent completed, so that you can see that progress. Once those tactics are completed, it will be rolled into percentage of objective completed.
Madam Mayor, follow-up then. Speaking specifically about project completion, again, because this document's changed many times, at one point, we saw the progress, and now that's been removed. I know in different iterations of the progress, it had changed. Some things were, I think, unintentionally marked as completed, and other tasks that had been marked as completed maybe weren't. Where are we at on the progress today versus where we were in January?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to answer that?
Where? I didn't know God was a female.
Yes.
Yes, J.C.
I can probably answer that a little bit better, just because that has changed since we originally put the software together, started to track, try to track some of that information. It was ridiculously time-intensive. So one of the changes that, not to mention, it wasn't totally completed and up-to-date by the time we got the first round of the many iterations of the report that you saw in January. So what has changed is rather, we don't track hours, we don't track specific costs, whatever, all the way down to the person. The actual tracking's going to take far longer than it would actually take to do some of the stuff. So what we changed is, for example, you have an objective, and you have four tactics. They go through, each person who is the lead on that objective, which is the director, is generally the lead over each objective. They determine, if you have four tactics, what percentage, that tactic, what percentage is it of the overall objective? So if they were equally weighted, you'd have twenty-five, 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 twenty-five. It can be different, and that could change. As you get through two tactics and they're completed, you get to a third one and go, "Wow, I thought this was going to be twenty percent. It's more time-intensive. It may be forty." Those things are going to move, it's a living, breathing document. As tactics have morphed, we've had, as directors have dug into some of these things, they've added more tactics. I know I had a request from Parks to add a couple of more tactics that they thought, a couple more steps that needed to be in there. So the way it's designed now is, when a tactic is completed, that's when you will see a percent complete change in the overall objective. So if you completed one of those four tactics and hit the checkmark box, it's going to say twenty-five percent complete in the overall objective, and it's also going to copy and paste that tactic into the notes section at the objective level, so you know where that percentage complete came from. We did task A, you can see all of that information. Does that help a little bit more?
It does.
And yes, there's no way I could print that report now and have it match what we showed you in January, just because the tracking mechanism has changed, the way we do it has changed.
It's very helpful, but Madam Mayor, a follow-up, though, maybe, J.C., you had mentioned that we're not tracking how much stuff is, how much we're spending? So how should council know? I mean, when this was very first presented to us, there was a specific item, or a line item, that talked about, there were dollar signs, how expensive each objective was. And I think, at least I remember the conversation, that being very helpful. We were able to weigh, when we were looking at each of our objectives, how expensive one of those would be. And we use that, and we basically provided a lot of our support or opposition to particular objectives. So if we're not able to track how much we're spending, how are we going to know how much has been spent?
I think basically because the tactics and many of the objectives are part of the role and responsibility in that department, and it's not a new effort. So what we have stated in the past is, when this is a new program, or it constitutes a new position, or it has a consultant cost, or if there's anything that is new, that will be brought through the budget process. And that budget process will then be tied to the focus area, to the strategic goal, and most likely mentioned in the strategic update from that department that's leading that objective.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, though, no way to track those dollars, though, over time? Is contemplated within the software tool or any document that we will see?
That software tool didn't anticipate being able to track costs unless they were new costs that were outside of the scope and routine of that department.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, originally when we adopted this, I'm sure you remember, we had some really, like, broad guesses as to what we thought an overall objective might cost. Yeah, that was very broad, and I think even at the time, if you read back through the minutes when it was first adopted, I think it was Councilmember Bird who said, "Yeah, this is really ambitious, and, you know, these numbers are pretty broad guesses at that point." And of course, as we adjust tactics and we, some of it we absorb, some of it will be new money that we will then come to council and ask for. But Madam Mayor is correct in that some of it is operational stuff that we're doing leading up to when we come to council if we have a budget enhancement that supports items in the strategic plan. I hope that helps.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Maybe you can help me with a glossary of terms. So one is an objective, right? The top, highest level, that's an objective.
The focus area.
The focus area?
Uh-huh.
So then is one A an objective?
A strategic goal.
Okay. So what's one A one? Tactic? Objective? That's the objective.
One A one is the objective.
Okay. It's hard to distinguish the objective. And so then one A one A would be a tactic? If there is an A? The next level would be a tactic?
Yes.
Okay.
Would be the operational action plan for that year.
And so in the new tool, we need a name for it.
Yeah, I need a name.
The J.C.'s tool, the tactic would only become visible to council after it's complete?
That's correct. That is correct. So you will see why there is a percentage complete done when that tactic is completed.
Because that's what I thought, if I may follow up, that's what I thought I heard, I believe it was last week, and then it seemed like there was clarification that, no, we would be able to see everything, and then I thought I heard you say it again tonight. So that is the case. We won't have everything, we'll only have after the tactics are complete as a percentage towards completing an objective. Okay. I'll let that sit for a minute.
Madam Mayor, I guess.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'm going to, I guess, then repeat the question that I asked last week, because I think it's important that we all hear that. Will council be able to see every part about the strategic plan, or there going to be elements that would be blocked from us?
You will not see the tactics because they reside in the lead and how they're going to roll out the execution of the objectives that support your strategic goals and your focus areas.
Madam Mayor, I hate to be pointed with my question, if I may follow up, but what community benefit exists for not allowing council to see those elements? I just, I'm struggling to wrap my head around what benefit we have by not allowing council to have the ability to see.
I think you have much ability to ask questions to the goal and to meet with your department directors that you're liaison to. They'll go over it, but that is a living, breathing document that is operational, that changes. What you see, I, they don't want, because of the fluidity of it, and I don't know how many boards of directors actually look into the minute-to-minute, blow-by-blow actions of what is being done in the front line. What we hope to get, and still give you access to, but we don't want you to approve things that are going to change, and so, no, we, the premise of the strategic plan with our policymakers is to seek your guidance, is if the vision, the mission, the execution, and the focus areas and the strategic goals are still, if we're all in align, in alignment on what is the vision moving this city towards is. And then it gets to the professionals that you hire to execute the plan. And that execution is a moving and breathing document. Mr. Palmer, and just one final comment. What's in front of you today is to adopt the vision and moving forward, not the objectives, not the operational plan of doing it. So these are almost two different conversations. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I love trials. I love trying things out and seeing how they work out. Today, we had at the top of the agenda an opportunity for anyone in the city to come and say whatever they wanted for three minutes. Nobody took that opportunity. That was a big worry that we had, that it might become a problem. First week, word probably hasn't gotten out, wasn't a problem. This has the potential, as you've outlined, of causing issues in your management of the city and the policies that we've set forth as a council. Until we've tried it, though, it may help us as a council to understand the operational, how things work, how everybody works, so that when we get to the budget setting process, we're a lot more knowledgeable of the process, instead of just setting numbers, you know, based on how we may have, from a high elevation or a high altitude, seen how things went. And so I understand why it may potentially cause problems. May we, as a council, have access to it on a trial basis to check it out and see how it goes, ask questions if we see something where we might be curious on how a process happens, but not necessarily giving instruction on how to move forward after that? Question mark?
You can always ask questions, and I'm always willing to meet with you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, then maybe a question for? Madam Mayor, then maybe a question for Mr. Neri. Mr. Neri, would the tactics be, that would be loaded into the system, be subject to public records requests?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes.
Additional discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
One of the many wise pieces of direction that I got way back.
You want to pull your mic up?
Way, way back. When I first served, and we've heard it every now and then, but it came from Councilman Byrd, who provides a lot of wise direction. And it wasn't regarding a strategic plan, but the idea was, when the city takes action, that we support it, and we drive forward together as one. And Councilman Byrd's been a pretty good example of that at times, when he might vote against something, again, unrelated to the plan, but support the city's decision as a whole, as a one body. So, I look at this strategic plan, again, that we adopted in 2015, and reaffirmed in January of 2016. And at that time, both times, quite frankly, it included a lot of important information that isn't really even reflected here. But it did reflect what's before us today. The levels, the five focus areas, again, there's not disagreement amongst, from what I've heard, amongst any of us, that those five focus areas are critical. And there's not disagreement necessarily that those goals listed on the sheet that's before us are no longer relevant. And we adopted this plan with everything that's before us within the plan. And this is a plan that was created at great length, with laborious efforts from staff, now led by Ms. Holman, who's done a fantastic job herding cats and trying to get this to a stage where we can track its execution, see progress, and identify things that aren't getting completed. I think the objectives are an important part of that, and we adopted the objectives as well in 2015 and 2016. I think the objectives, and when you go back to the original packet that we adopted, pages 1 through 15 is just, it's excellent work. And it's all the way through the focus areas, the goals, and the objectives. Doesn't, the subsequent pages speak to tactics. And here's where I see the disconnect. The disconnect comes with, at the objective level, although we've all, we've adopted them all, we had a meeting where Councilman Kavner raised some concerns on some of the objectives. And that's the conversation, at least, the council didn't have, and we're kind of dancing around, right? We adopted all the objectives, and the existing strategic plan has all of the objectives in them. And whether we all agree with all of them, and I'm sure we don't, I don't.
I don't.
But as one city, we do. And those are the objectives of the single city, and staff is charged with implementing and driving forward on that plan and creating tactics to execute and accomplish those objectives. Councilman Kavner brought up some concerns with some of those objectives, and that's the conversation we haven't had. And it can be as simple of as addressing an individual objective. You've raised concerns on some, and I've raised some concerns, and other council members have on an objective here or there. Let's discuss it. Let's review it. If there is a consensus to remove it, let's remove it. And it'll come out, and we'll all support the plan in its absence. And if the consensus is that particular objective should remain, and that's the majority decision, then we, all six and seven of us, will support the city in its efforts to accomplish that objective. That's the conversation that might be missing. So, I'm supportive of the plan itself that already exists, of the objectives that are already included in the existing adopted plan. If now we're at some point in the immediate future, like Councilwoman Little Roberts had suggested, we have a workshop discussion to say, objective 1A1, should it stay, should it not? Is it irrelevant? Is it incomplete? Up or down? Are we good? Well, how about 1A2? Up or down? I think that'll do two things. It'll bring to the surface any of those objectives that there's legitimate concern should be removed, and if that's a consensus, get it out. And Ms. Holman would love to know that, so she doesn't have to worry about managing tactics to accomplish it. And if the converse is true, if there's consensus, that objective should remain, then by God, let's keep it in, and we, as a single body, will promote its accomplishment, and we can move forward. And then every six months, that's what I envisioned, what you were talking about, Madam Mayor, is every six months, you'll come forward and say, within our collection of objectives, that we, as one single body, have all supported, or are supporting going forward, here's what's been accomplished. Here's what tactics we have completed and utilized to accomplish those. And how you do it on those tactics, that's the operational level. We're not defining and telling and directing how a particular objective gets completed. That's the department's executing, and the executive branch leading that charge. That's what I thought the reports would come back at. So, again, I started with Councilman Byrd's wise guidance, because I think that's going to be critical. And the strategic plan's original 15 pages speak to its development, and we can't lose sight of the manner and process at which a strategic plan gets developed. And kind of the ugly kind of guts of it is important. It's a living document, and that struggle and vetting and discussion will happen in perpetuity as this plan evolves, and the objectives evolve. And that's awesome. We can't skip that step. So, I, and I apologize, I didn't bring it up either. You know, when we looked at this, when you first brought this up, Councilman Kavner, that's, I think, now looking back, maybe where we should have steered it. Because I think that's maybe one of the conversations, and I don't mean to speak for you, that you, I take it you wanted to have, and say, hey, I think objective X is problematic. Let's talk about it. And if there's consensus that that objective should come out, then it gets removed. And my sense is, if there's consensus that it should stay in for whatever particular reason, then it stays in, and we move forward as one body. So, I think the plan itself that you presented, I don't think, Madam Mayor, that you're asking to exclude objectives by any stretch. I think the objectives are still in. I think we should still see them.
You will.
And I, quite frankly, think we should see the tactics. The concern would be, do we control and define and approve tactics? I don't think so. I don't. I don't have any problem in, quite frankly, if it's a public record, seeing them, being aware of them, being informed, nothing wrong with that. But the objectives are important for us to adopt. So, we've adopted them, they exist today. If we don't act today, we have a strategic plan with 20-some-odd objectives included. If now or at some future point, there's going to be a request to review them and exclude some of them, let's have that conversation. And then, once we decide it, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, back to Councilman Byrd's direction, I get excited for us all to row in the same boat, in the same direction with the plan, unified, and give Ms. Holman and everyone else that direction, the council and the mayor behind it. It's important. That's my thoughts on it.
Okay. So...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Amen. So, then I think, moving forward, as opposed to just adopting this and some future date, we have that conversation. I think we hold on to this, have that conversation, where we have that meeting, where, who knows how long it's going to go? And we go through each of the objectives, see most of them, everyone's going to be like, yeah, that's great, move on to the next one, discuss the ones that we might have issues with. Discussion goes on too long, take a vote, move on to the next one. And that be the day that we adopt any amendments to the existing strategic plan really soon.
Well, council, I would ask, on the focus areas and the strategic goals, I really think that the strategic or our senior management team need to know that you're all on the same page on that, because there will be, when we report back, I'm not going to ask them to spend time on things that you don't all agree on in that regard.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Then to that, for example, 4C, because I don't know what's under that, those words worry me.
4C? You have the objectives, so you do know what's under it.
But without deciding on the objectives, for example, I want the whole thing gone on 4C. But I'd love to hear the discussion on the objectives to know additional information is to, maybe I'm misunderstanding an objective, maybe things aren't meant as I'm interpreting them in my mind. So, I think the discussion is important as opposed to just adopting that, and then later we may get rid of all the objectives, and then that may be gone altogether anyway.
Mr. Byrd, I guess we can talk on Friday as we look at future agendas to see when we can schedule this for further conversation.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Based on the discussions that we've had about it, we may want to schedule a special meeting and a full day. So, maybe get April sitting out a doodle poll to find out when we're all available for an entire day.
We'll discuss it on Friday and see what we come back with as a recommendation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Question, maybe then, for legal. We've got an item in front of us that's adoption, so, I mean, do we have to take some action on that as far as continuing it?
No.
Or holding it until? Date certain?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Kavner, you can remove it and put it back at a different time. It's just a resolution, so.
You don't have to take action.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Seeing the discussion, Steph, I move that we remove the Resolution 17-2010 to a further council meeting.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Do we need to have a motion to remove this?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it'd be cleaner for the record.
For the record, we probably need a date certain.
You don't have to have a date certain. You can remove it, just like any other resolution of the council. You can remove it and bring it back when it's appropriate. There's no, there's no legal requirement that you put this to a date certain.
Mr. Clerk.
Just to clarify, the resolution under discussion is 17-2009. Mr. Byrd stated 17-2010.
I did get the wrong one.
Yeah, 200.
I'm doing A.D. County Highway. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 2009.
Make that note.
We already had.
Okay.
Okay, the motion and a second was to remove this item. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Mayor, real quick discussion on that.
Yes.
Recommendation, if it's not part of the motion, to have this come back for discussion within the next 30 days. My comments and thoughts were that it's not a discussion from scratch to develop objectives for a strategic plan. It might be pretty quick, because we've gone through this at length, we've got our own ideas and reviews and beliefs, where it might be of our existing 15-page strategic plan that we've already adopted, that exists for the city, objective 1A1, it says this. We good? Discussion concerned? Stays. 1A2, and so forth. That's what I envision to be a discussion, if at all possible. If we get into anything else and try and rewrite the plan, it's not what I thought was going to be productive.
Great. We'll get it back real quick.
Well, we'll put it on a future agenda. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 12 is in executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive session as per I.D. Code 742061F.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.